Okay.
Okay.
So we're all set?
All right. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Seven, eleven. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, see is how we don't have a quorum to vote on them minutes, as I was absent for the previous minutes. We'll skip over that and go into regular business. Mr. Stevens, we've got three members of the board. You're entitled to have five members on. In order to get anything passed, you need three affirmative votes. Leave it to your discretion.
God bless all three of you.
Okay, we'll read the article and begin with. There will be a public hearing on the application for variance from Section 32-56 of the New Market Zoning Ordinance, permitted use table R... I've got more buzzers going off.
Yeah, lots of buzzers.
Permitted use table R2 District to allow mixed-use development in the R2 District and a variance from Section 32-46A-M2A District by the New Market Zoning Ordinance. My problem is I can't shut it off. Regarding the project containing 62 parking spaces and a variance reference Section 32-89, dimensional table M2A and R2 Districts of the New Market Zoning Ordinance regarding allowing 42 residential units and a variance reference Section 42A, Sections B and E, M2A District of the New Market Zoning Ordinance to allow residential units on the first floor due to frontage on South Street, requested by CC Railroad Street, New Market LLC. The properties involved are 1 Railroad Street, tax map U3 lot 138, M2A District; 3 Railroad Street, tax map U3 lot 138A, M2A District; and 5 Railroad Street, map, tax map U4, lot 16, M2A and R2 Districts. The application is available to view in the zoning office at the New Market Downhall during business hours.
Well, it's actually Section 46A.
Yep, what did I say?
South Main Street, 42A.
Oh, sorry, correction on that. It's 46A Sections B and E of the M2A District of the New Market Zoning Ordinance to allow residential units on the first floor due to frontage on South Main Street, requested by CC Railroad Street, New Market LLC. With that, we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Stevens.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Attorney Henry Stevens. I represent CC Railroad Street, New Market LLC. The applicant. We were here about a year ago, and the board was good enough to grant a number of variances and special exceptions for a proposal that we had at that time for four, sorry, for eight housing units on the properties 1 and 3 Railroad Street. Those two properties are involved in this, and we've added 5 Railroad Street to it. The thing that has been most dominant in the press and the legislature and the politics is how badly new up-to-date housing is needed. And that's a theme of your master plan also. And what we're particularly proud about tonight is that we will provide much-needed up-to-date housing. We'll significantly increase the town's tax base, and we'll meet the major goals of the town's master plan and zoning ordinance, although not including, not increasing, the school budget. We think all of those things are important. We think they're all addressed in the master plan and the ordinance. I think we can all agree that up-to-date housing is needed. I don't think anyone in New Hampshire disagrees with that. I hope that we all agree that deteriorated, you know, deteriorated old B&amp;M warehouses that have been there since the B&amp;M sold and mothbilled the tiny lots are not increasing the value of the property around me. The master plan is clear. One of the town's principal goals is to promote repurposing and/or redevelopment of vacant and deteriorating properties that would contribute to the expanding tax base. Similarly, zoning ordinance specifically states that the purpose of the M2A zone, the zone in which over 80% of this project lies, shall be to promote, enhance, expand, and expand the social, civic, and residential potential functions of the downtown area. I would be glad to run through each of the variances that we've requested and to go through them if you'd like. But if you have any general questions or comments, I'd love to answer them right now.
I have a question.
Great.
I don't understand the zoning districts. M2A does not abut R2. Anyway.
It does.
It does?
Yeah. Yeah, so what they were talking about is they have three parcels. The parcels of 1 and 3 Railroad Street are in the M2A District. The parcel of 5 Railroad Street's in the R2 District.
And M2A.
Part of it, not all of it. It's a very funny zoning situation. There's a little bubble of zoning that you might call a spot zone, except that it is connected to other M2A zones. And it comes right up here. And it's just a, it's sort of like someone drew a picture and then wanted to add a head to it. It's a tiny little bubble.
You're looking at a large.
Covers a little bit.
It's not big enough. It's not big enough.
It's a really small, small. And it comes right in and covers just a little bit there.
See how they have these little parcels here?
Yeah.
This little bubble right here, that's the R2 District. And then it abuts R2.
That's right, in there somewhere.
Yeah, so you have R2.
So it's, it's, comes right here, goes over, comes down, and then goes across right here.
Yep, so you have M2A here, you have R2.
Okay, all right, you're good with it, so.
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I guess I'll get right to the gist of things.
Okay.
I read through this several times, and I still can't find any evidence of hardships. I find a lot of statements and many repeated statements from the master plan and variety of other things, but I find no evidence. You allude to in your preamble, "proposed for construction of badly needed residential housing" to make its proposal economically viable. But you give no, you give no evidence of economic viability.
So what that addressed is we were here a year ago.
Yep.
And what we've been working on, what the app has been working on, is taking a bunch of property down by the railroad tracks that were cut off by the railroad tracks when they went into bankruptcy and sold in little parcels. And many of them, like lots 1 and 2, or 3, have just been left, they're deteriorating, they're mostly vacant. They are an eyesore. And we had thought, what we had originally tried to do was to use those lots to create a basis for residential and commercial addition to the main downtown area that would go on that side of the tracks.
Correct. You're not getting any argument from me on that basis.
And so what happened was, to do that economically, we were relying on a New Hampshire investment. There was a fund that was made available out of state to fund housing projects like this. And our thought was, if we came in and we started with eight, it would, it would start the whole process of renaissance of that whole area. And it would allow the development down the way with more attractive new housing. What we found was, we weren't able to get the investment from Hampshire funds. So we had to make it economically feasible. So what we did is, we bought, tried another parcel of property, lot 5, and added that to it, which makes it big enough to put 42 units on it. And it makes it economically make sense for the increased interest rates and increased construction costs to go forward with the project. But the theory is the same. We've got, we've got a very badly deteriorating place in town. It's an eyesore. It's exactly what the master plan says you want to replace and repair. And that's what we're trying to do. We think because it's immediately adjacent to the downtown and that the zone that's primarily in, 80% of it is in the M2A zone, says its purpose is to enhance the downtown, that we're doing exactly what the master plan asked.
Correct.
We can ask for, you can ask us for the hardships. And I would tell you that there are a number of hardships. Principally, they arise out of the skewed development of sale of the B&amp;M land back in the '70s when they went bankrupt into these little awkward parcels that can't reasonably be developed any other way than be combining them and backing on them together.
Okay, the skewed parcels and everything, that's what makes these parcels unique. I understand that. I have no issue with that. I'm just trying to figure out how you got to 41 units, 41 residential units and three commercial units, and what, how, what the hardship is to get from eight to 41. I saw no, there's no.
It's the same hardship.
There's no evidence, there's no evidence presented here. We're an evidentiary board, and there's no evidence presented. You've got a lot of very, very nice words in here, but they say the same thing over and over and over again with no evidence presented.
So let's talk about the hardships. We'll go with the first, the first issue, the first variance that's raised, which is to allow mixed-use development in R2 zones. The fact of the matter is that very little of this property is in R2, is in. It adjoins and abuts all M2A property. It's in a little bubble. It's in this odd thing that happened, it may have happened just when the map got drawn, not with verbal description, because it's so incredibly odd, and you see a picture, you see a picture. And our feeling is that this creates a big hardship, creating enough property in the M2 zone with frontage to do the project. And that is a significant hardship. And it's flat zoning, which is illegal also. So I, you know, that's another.
Again, those are characteristics that make the lot unique. I don't see any evidence that suggests what makes the hardship, what brings it up to the point where you need 41 units to make this economically viable. There's no evidence presented to that. I agree with you, there's a, there's the configuration of lots and the zoning make it difficult. Those are the things that are unique to the parcel. What makes the 41 units the only answer that works there?
They're not the only answer that works there. That is basically the hardship, is the uniqueness of the zoning map and the parcels. What I talked about economic hardship was to explain, it wasn't to say that that was the particular hardship. We, we can't build, we can't afford to build an eight-unit building down there now without the state funds and without that. So for us to build a building that makes any sense for New Market or for the developer or for the neighborhood, we've got to put in more units. To put in more units on these lots requires a variance because of the lot conditions.
Correct. And I keep asking, why, what, what makes 41 units economically viable? I'm not suggesting.
So if you, if you look at the site work alone, you know, it's, it's $300,000 site work, no matter if you have one unit or if you have 100 units. That's just what the site work is going to cost with the drainage that's needed there. There's a stream right there that you have to do a lot of different drainage work. You have to use impervious pavement there just to bring down, you have the pervious soils. And there is an extreme financial hardship to build there.
That's fine. And we can look at financial hardship. But right now, you just gave us 41 units. We need this because we got a screwed-up lot line, mapping line. Another way to do this would be to petition the town council to change the line locations, to make it all inclusive. I just don't see any evidence that was presented that would justify the 41 units at this point. I'm not saying they're not justified. I mean, there's enough going on down there that it probably works. But there's no evidence presented that justifies the 41 units right now. We went from eight to 41. You say it's not economically viable.
Right.
Prove it!
Well, I can prove it. But I'll tell you what the law is. And I'm going to be very clear about this. The law is that the zoning hardship has to deal with the land, not with the economics of it. The reason I brought the economics into it is because the reality of the matter in today's world is to build units, whether it's eight units or 42 units, you need to do a whole lot of base stuff. The costs are the same. It doesn't, you don't get any return. There's no return to investment if you only build the eight. Now, that is the truth of the law. It is not a zoning hardship, and it shouldn't be intended to be a zoning hardship. In fact, the Supreme Court has said that the financial concerns are not a financial, are not a zoning hardship. The zoning hardship is the land. And, you know, your question about why we need to do the larger project, the larger project needs to be done to do, to do it economically.
Correct. I have no doubt about that. I just want to see the evidence that justifies that. We've got a situation where the lots are such that it's screwed up. I'm not looking at the lot lines because what we're going to grant you, if we decide to grant you that, basically makes the zoning lines go away. That's what you're asking us to do. And I'm asking you to say why we need to make that happen. Somebody took a lot of time to do that, and you're saying that to make it economically viable. I'd like to see the numbers.
Again, I need to just, I'm glad to show you the numbers. Honestly, we're not, we won't hide anything. But what I'm, what I'm saying for the purposes of a variance, the law is quite clear that the financial issues are not a question. The question is the land that you put in the project on. We have a right under the Constitution.
Correct.
To put up any, a building on our property.
Correct.
And we get a lot of weight on that. And the reason that there's a zoning variance here, there's a ZDA board, is to allow the government to bend the variance so that it is not unconstitutional, so it doesn't violate the Constitution. Now, I argued the simplex case in which the court said the constitutional issue is a major issue. You have to put a balancing in. And the balancing has to be between the constitutional rights of the applicant and the rights of the city or town. And the rights of the city or town are secondary to those unless they weigh evenly. And what we're saying here is there is a physical hardship to build on our property. We've acquired these parcels. And because of the, of the zoning and the lot line issues, there is a real hardship to do a viable development here. And the issue is not, why are we doing it? We're doing it, we'll admit to you, it's because of money.
Correct.
We can't, we can't do the other project and really want to do the project here.
That's, and I, I'm not disputing that. I'm just trying to figure out how we got from eight units to 41 units. And we're just supposed to roll over and say, oh, yes, it's so great because, you know, the town master plan encourages development of the downtown. I'm just not seeing it. I'm just not seeing how 41 units correlates to, why it correlates to that.
It correlates to that because we have a constitutional right to build on our property.
Correct.
The only thing that's stopping that are these unusual zoning, this unusual zoning bubble and the lot lines. And we say that that's a hardship and that we should be able to build on our property. A building, and the size or number of it shouldn't, shouldn't matter as long as, as long as it's reasonable and as long as it fits within the master plan and what the purposes of the zoning plan are. And that's what, that's what we're saying here. I'm sorry I put the economic stuff in there. I put the economic stuff in there because I wanted you to know why we can go ahead and build the eight, eight-unit building.
Economics has a place in every project. Understood. I'm just trying to figure out how we got from eight units to 41 units with no explanation other than we've got some funky tax map lines.
So are you, just a clarifying question. So, so it's eight to 41 right now. So why not eight to 22 or eight to 17? Right, so how did it?
I don't know.
Right, and that's, that's the question you're asking, right?
I don't know.
And I'll tell you why we went to, to never do a ZDA. We tried to make the units affordable. And we tried to create a situation in which there wouldn't be a lot of children moving into town, so there wouldn't be a bump in the school budget. So what we did is we're building all studios and one bedroom. And we want to put as many of those in as are appropriate for the size lot we have. And we believe for the size lot we have, that's the appropriate number. That's what we can fit there. If we could put 142 units there, although we hesitate just because that's such a big number, but we should be able to say we want to build 142 there. And the question becomes, is, is there a hardship? And yes, there is a hardship that we've just discussed. And that's the only hardship standard.
Bob, at the beginning, you mentioned something about talking to town council about removing the zoning.
No, town, the council, yeah. Prevising the zoning lines there.
Right, so.
What difference would that make?
I don't know.
So there is, there is a plan for a master plan, as I understand, that's underway. And I think that's a very important process and that hasn't been done in many, too many years in this town. There have been new amendments to it, but there's supposed to be a new master plan every 10 years. And there is hesitation. And you're doing it now. And there's a great opportunity. And we'd be glad to participate in talking about that and being part of the conversation about the master plan and how it can be improved to meet the purposes that are stated in, in the original master plan, which we assume will be carried, the ones that will be carried over, and in the zoning ordinance, to correct things like this. But I don't think that we should have to wait for master plan process to go through or should have to petition for, for a change in the zoning here, which will take until the next town meeting. And when we have, we have a hardship. And we have property that we can, under the Constitution, use as we want.
If I may for a second? So my position for the zoning, all it does is it just removes one of the variance requests.
Okay, okay.
It really doesn't have any impact.
Okay.
We still have to weigh in on the number of units, dimension table and stuff like that. How about that?
Okay.
Well, I'm the only one talking here, so it's not. Anybody else got anything to say? We can go over them point by point. And we've got some people out in the audience, so it's 7:28?
38.
38. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this? Step up to the mic and.
Let me take my papers out of the way. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name's Brett Nelson. I live at 10 Railroad Street, which is directly across from this project. I asked the board tonight before any, any decisions are made to walk the property. Railroad Street is a very small residential street. It's a dead-end residential street. There are only seven buildings on it, 14 units total. Small town park along the top of the hill. This is going to be a three-story, you know, very large building with parking lot entrance directly across the street from our house. So 62 spots in our parking lot. All the headlights that are going to be coming out and all the traffic getting out is directly across from our, our house. So we're going to be greatly affected by this building. Initially, this was eight, eight units. Now this is up to 41. It's a three-story building, very large parking lot, you know, connected to it. So I just asked that, you know, before any things, decisions are made just to walk the property and see that, that this is a very large project. I think it, it doesn't fit the neighborhood. It's just too large.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now you're all set?
I have not received any letters.
You've not received any letters? All the notices have been done accordingly? Well, I'm not seeing anybody else speak, so let's close the public hearings section of things and open up for discussion amongst ourselves.
So Bob, are you going to go each variant separate?
Don't we have to, Kelly?
It's going to be easier, yeah.
Can we stay with General Furman?
Yeah.
I think we've covered everything I have on my list except, except for one. I don't think we've come to any decisions on them, but I have a problem with the traffic at the intersection of South Main and Railroad. First of all, your, your plan shows, I believe, shows 50, that's my number, 56 spaces. It doesn't show 62. Tell me I'm wrong.
I think you are wrong.
Well, you have 27, 21, 5 and 4, or 6 and 4.
This is the number I got from the engineer.
Sorry, the engineer has added a couple more spots. This, this map doesn't show it. He's added, back where this no storage is, there's a couple more spots right there to bring it up.
Bring it up to 62?
Yeah, so right now this is showing 58, but we were able to get up to 64 spots, uh, 62 spots, sorry.
That's a lot of traffic going out that road. Just wanted to bring that up and let it be known that I'm concerned about it. The other thing is, is you, I guess there's a little contention about frontage. And I'd like to get that straightened out. You say there isn't frontage on South Main?
Yes, as a matter of fact. What, what, I'd love to show you the picture. But the property line starts about 200 feet, or, I had it never, it starts a number of feet back from the road. So the property line isn't on South Main or Main Street. What, it, and that, if you look at the, if you look at the.
That's the property line.
Okay.
The lot and the line showing the height, it's a stiff, it's a steep cliff. At the top of that steep cliff along Main Street, there's a huge steel barrier. Because the hills soaks, it's stiff. But such a cliff, you don't want people going over that. So there is no reasonable way you can say that there is frontage on that street. The boundary isn't on that street. There's no way of getting from, to that street from the property. And so how can it be fronted?
Where is that small piece of land, that small piece of land, who owns it?
That's part of the, yeah, that's part of the right-of-way.
Right-of-way, okay. So that's. So it does have frontage. It just doesn't above the hot dog.
That's right.
And, and there really is no way you can have frontage being at the front on the road. You can define it that way, the, the line can be wherever it wants. But the reality of the zoning ordinance is trying to do, and what the law says to do, is access on frontage. And there's no friggin' way you can get access on frontage.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm not going to, I just was curious. I, I understand what you're saying. But I still say there's too much traffic. 62 cars going out on that road. Okay.
Well, it's, it's interesting because the traffic, what we're, what we're planning right now is just to have one commercial space, although it says three commercial spaces in it. And what the traffic will be, will be scattered. It's only going to be, the apartments are only going to be small apartments. They're going to be studio apartments and one room apartments.
The average of about 500 square feet per unit, so.
Okay.
And that's to make them affordable. And it's also because we recognize that there would be an increased top cost to the town if we brought that many apartments in that people could have children. So what we're trying to do is keep the tax rate down and increasing the taxable base and increasing the taxes that will come to the town.
Okay. The only other thing I had, Bob, was I had written down, "I agree with this gentleman out here. I think for all, for all of us, it'd be good to have a sidewalk." I'm, I'm familiar with the property, but maybe somebody else isn't.
Yeah. What do you think?
Well, depending on how far we get tonight, I guess. If you want, I'll just keep that in my, in your mind, that's all.
Okay. Let's go with item one, the variance to allow mixed-use development in the R2 zoning district. So granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest? And we wouldn't address that?
Unless I'm misunderstanding something, this would be the only way for the project to be able to be done? Is if it was, if it, if that criteria was allowed because it would need to be, because it's abutting to that M2 Alpha?
Yes.
It would ask to be a part of that in order to allow for that to continue through? So the only way for the project to go through would be to allow that?
They could ask for a variance for that, too.
The reverse? The M2 Alpha to be part of the R2, is that what you're saying?
They could ask for a variance to eliminate that, indeed for the three units, correct? The mixed.
Yeah, so because there's commercial in the R2 district, this is where that's now considered a mixed-use building in the R2. If they decided to get rid of the commercial space entirely out of the R2, then this would not be.
But since it's a mixed-use building in an R2, they need the variance in order to successfully complete the project as proposed?
So it would, so what it would do is, is as their current proposal now?
Right.
Put the commercial in the R2.
Right, right.
If it was approved, they could keep it.
Right, right, right.
If it was denied, they would have to go back to the drawing board and reconfigure the building to get that commercial out of the R2.
Right.
So I understand what he's saying, that, you know, the, the, the way the maps are drawn, it brings about the hard, brings about an aspect of the hardship to that. But that, that whole area was always, had, always had commercial unit right back from when Ed Moisen was there. It's always had commercial in there, so that shouldn't be an issue.
So looking specifically at the court ruling, I don't know if it's Boss or Bossy versus Portsmouth 107 and H523, quote, "An area spot zone when it signaled out for treatment different from that that the similar surrounding land, which cannot be justified on basis of health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the community and which is not in accordance with the comprehensive plan." Based on that legal ruling, it seems like there's basis to allow that. But I have a feeling you could say so.
So it's, it's not specifically spot zoning where it's continuous with R2 on the other side of the road. So spot zoning would be more of a, here in the middle of the M2 district, and I'm going to carve out a little spot right here.
Like a concentric circle kind of thing?
Or just a lot.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
See, the slot is now R2.
Yeah.
That's more spot zoning. Where this is connected to continuation of the R2 zone. Has a little bubble effect in the M2A, but it is still part of the larger R2 zone.
Okay. Criteria number two. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. And I've got no heartburn with that?
No.
Criteria number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because?
Ronnie, can I address that with the increased housing following the plan? The master plan of being able to have more housing in the area. State is underdeveloped at the moment. A bit of a housing crisis, so having that.
I think, I think like the gentleman says, there's going to be a significant effect to that neighborhood. Would it impact their property values?
Hard to say.
Hard to say. You know, if the, if you've got a house that all of a sudden surrounded by parking lot, I'd say it would, it would make it harder for me. I'm just saying that's an awful lot of units over there for a small parcel.
Remember, right now, we're just talking about the use. We're not talking about the commercial units.
I understand that, I understand that. The use, so. It's always had a commercial use in there, so, I mean, going back to when the gas hall was there, so, with Ed Moisen's property over there and New England barricade. If the variance is granted, would the value of surrounding properties be diminished? I don't think so. I think we'd be okay with that because it, it had a commercial use there before. Owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the public purpose of the ordinance and the provisions of the specific application. Again, we've got the, the response to that is, "Newmarket's public policy goals as set forth in the master plan is to continually encourage redevelopment of downtown." Well, in terms of commercial, that's not really redeveloping over there. It's just putting three units in so we can get 41 housing units on top of it. I, I don't see that as. And again, it could just be me, but it'll expand the tax base of the housing units. But we've seen that happen with, with all the Cheneys developments up on Bennett Way and on Hershey Lane.
Unless, unless they're trying to use the term of redevelopment of vacant and deteriorating properties of, you know, this, making it a flourishing area.
Okay.
I bet I speculate.
That's, that's part A. Part B. Explain how if criteria in part, some part A immediately above are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance. And a variance is therefore necessary to enable the reasonable use. I think this one, what he's, what he's saying is that the way the lines are configured, he can't get the, the building into one, fit into one zone. Okay, does anybody else want to address this, or?
Well, I got to agree with them on the special conditions of the property. However, I have to agree with Bob. I don't see how in the world you can fit 41 in there, units.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I don't know where to, how to go with this.
Well, I've got no problem with the, with the commercial units being in there. I mean, that's.
Yeah, no, I don't either.
It, it was there before.
Yeah.
And I've got no, no problem with that at all.
I mean, it could be argued that, well, barricade has been there, but it could be argued that they lost the grandfather because it's been so long on the gas. But there is a history of commercial.
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
Just for a point of clarification, the New England barricade building is actually in the M2A district?
Right, the, the Horizon Engineering that is commercial on the first floor, that's been, that's Horizon Engineering probably for the last 15 years and then it was construction built there prior to that. So that first floor of that building has been.
You mean, we see that it was?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So it's the commercial.
I, I don't, I just don't understand how they drew this, this map here years ago.
I wasn't here, so I don't.
I know. I can't blame you. I, I, I don't understand why. But then, on the other hand, I can't agree with 41 units.
Well, on this one, this is just to get the commercial.
Okay.
Yeah. And I have, I have no, no, no problem with that. I would vote, I would vote on, would make a motion to the affirmative of that, that we allow that? And if you want to read the.
All right. Variance request one, motion to grant. Move to grant a variance request from CC Railroad Street, New Market LLC, petitioning the zoning board of adjustment for relief from section 32-56, table of permitted uses of the municipal code of the town of New Market. Permit a mixed-use development in the R2 zoning district on a real property with an address of 1, 3, and 5 Railroad Street, tax map U3, lot 138, tax map U3, lot 138 Alpha, and tax map U4, lot 15, within the M2 Alpha and R2 zoning districts as the petition satisfies five-part test of the variance statute, pursuant to RSA 674-33.
A second.
All those in favor? If you will call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're going to go on to the dimensional. I think that's the one that Wayne and I have the most hardship with, so. Item number two, applicant seeks a variance or variances required to allow 42 residential units at the proposed project, notwithstanding the maximum number of rental units shown on the dimensional table, section 32-89 of the zoning districts, M2 and R2. M2A and R2.
I thought it was 41, not 42. It shows 42.
42 or the?
So I'm guessing that you're saying 42 because it's 41 residential.
Oh, and one commercial.
I know, but it says 42 residential.
It says 42. Did somebody type it up wrong?
Yeah. I, I have typed it up.
Okay, so it's 41 residential? Okay.
As long as we're all in agreement. I'm not sure that granting the variance would be in the public interest. That's an awful lot of units over there in a small area. And, you know, we've got the, we've got residential units all through there. Have been established there for a long time. And I'm just not sure that 41 units fits there. When M2A were allowed, were allowed.
M2A, so it's.
Right, right here.
Six units per acre.
And we're allowed two units per acre. We've got three-quarters of an acre there. So that's a big increase. So how many would be permitted?
So, so one thing to factor is, this board did grant us a variance on, I think it's 23 acres for eight units, which is, if you actually look at the ratio, this is less units per land than what was granted by this board prior to the New England signed barricade.
Yeah, but 41 is bigger than eight.
If you look at the land.
I, I know what you're saying. The total effect is, is more.
And, and one of the things that we tried to discuss in this, and as Chairman said, we discussed it. we discussed it perhaps too much, is the public interest is not necessarily a few people. Public interest is the public as a whole. And what we're doing for the public as a whole is dependent, is very heavily in the public interest. Now, if there's a traffic problem, that can be resolved. And that can be resolved among the people who live there. And we'll find, figure out a way to do that. But I think that.
For instance, how would you resolve it?
We would move parking to a different lot that's not necessarily on railroad.
I don't think it's the parking as much. I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the traffic going on.
Exactly, so I'm saying if we moved, if we moved the parking so there wasn't traffic, all the traffic coming down on railroad. You know, we own a property adjacent on Jerry Ave where.
And which you'd have to cross the tracks.
No, you'd walk up and around, there's sidewalks all the way.
Well, I'm talking about car traffic.
Well, that's what I'm saying is the cars would go to Jerry Ave because there's no parking on, there wouldn't be parking on railroad. So, and this is things that can be reviewed in a site plan. Because there'll have to be a traffic impact study at that point.
And I would say that honestly, the number of units is an issue that's going to be discussed with the planning board also. And what we're trying to do is meet the first hurdle to get to the planning board. So there's going to be a lot more public exposure to that bit and a lot more opportunity for input. But we really feel strongly that the public interest is well-served. Very well-served.
There's a couple of restaurants that call me all the time asking, hey, do you have any apartments in town for our employees to live? They don't have a car, they need to be able to walk. And it's a non-stop problem just in New Market alone. A lot of these people don't have cars and walk to Johnny Boss's or walk to different places.
No, I'm not disagreeing that there's not a need for it.
Which is the public interest.
Housing units is in the public interest. I'm just trying to wrap my head around how we get to forty-one units. Okay. The next part of that is, let's see. Criteria, it's in the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Criteria number two. The ordinance would allow for six units on those two parcels as it stands.
I think it's twelve, right?
According to this, I've got half an acre and a quarter of an acre. Ten thousand.
Ten thousand two hundred.
No, that's the building area. I'm just looking at the dimensional requirements. What's the total acreage of this?
That's what I was just looking at.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, I'm just confirming that's.
No, so those are dimensional requirements.
That's, that's, that's this table right here.
It's one point one two five acres.
Is that one point one two five?
No.
So the M2A zone, the density is six units per acre.
Which is the bulk of the zone.
Which is the bulk of the zone. R2 zone is two units per acre.
So we've got a maximum density, let's say for seven, let's say seven units, just a.
It says nineteen point.
I would say it would be like five point. Five in a decimal number.
Because it says nineteen point five percent of the lot is zone R2. So round it to twenty, so you got an eighty-twenty M2A versus R2.
So what we've got is an eightfold increase in density on there. Is that, is that in the spirit of the ordinance?
You may have to say that if you change the purpose of the M2A zone, it basically says it wants to expand the commercial zone.
Correct.
And I think that to expand the commercial zone, you're going to have bigger units, bigger buildings. And that's just the spirit of the ordinance. It's not, it's not our, you know, it's not unusable based on what the ordinance.
It's the magnitude of the project that has me worried, bothered. Forty-one units down there is an awful lot of density.
So there are a number of things that could be worked on with the planning board to resolve. One is widening railroad street.
It's what?
Widening railroad street. So that it adds better traffic circulation. I think this gentleman's concern is that it's a narrow way. And we can fix those things. But I think that what we're talking about is something that if you look at the overall town, the public interest, not just any quantity, this is their change. This is very important to this town. Public policy, every indication is that public policy and public interest is for this. I don't disagree with this gentleman that we have to deal with the traffic. And we will.
I'm just trying to think of areas other than the downtown where we've got anywhere near this kind of density.
Right down at the end of the street, there's a twelve unit. I think it's, I have to look at the other acres.
On railroad street, there's a large apartment house existing that has a number of units, I believe it is over ten. I haven't counted them. But they're there and that traffic has been going on off railroad street for some time now. We're not talking, this is being the only violating building among in the area.
Yeah, but that went up before zoning went in. And there's each one. The line right at the end. Yeah, Vince is standing there.
That's all there's. Is that how many units are in there, ten or dozen? Oh, you fit a lot of them in there.
I think there are, he said there are twelve. I haven't counted them. But they're, you know, it's a big, it's a big building.
No, I know the building, yeah.
So one of the.
But ten is a lot less than forty-one.
But what you've done is you've set a precedent by having a part, dilating apartment building right there, right next to where we're drawing.
Yeah, but we're not sure that that was done with the current zoning. We don't know, I don't know whether.
No, that was done in the eighties.
But it still exists there. And that's one of the things the court's going to look at. Is that, is your zoning appropriate there in light of the fact there's a pre-existing multi-unit housing building? And I think it's something you have to consider.
I don't think we're, I know myself, I'm not debating whether or not apartments would be, should go there or could go there or it would be bad for the town. I'm not saying any of that. I'm just looking at the total number. That's what I'm afraid of.
And I'm not saying that that's the number that has to go there. I was just, I've just been right along looking for the rationale behind that. And, you know, where the tipping point is.
So that where you get, and again, this gets to our constitutional rights to our property. What we're talking about is an analysis that we've done to keep the units small and to keep them so that we're not adding to the town budget and to provide housing for people who badly need it.
And is there a problem with sharing that with us?
Yeah, well, I can tell you that the numbers just work out.
And we're happy to share.
We'll be glad to share you the numbers.
There's a fixed cost to build this. Whether I put one or a million, there's a fixed cost. And so obviously, the more units I can do to spread out that fixed cost is when it starts becoming financially viable.
I understand that. And what we're trying, what I'm trying to do is figure out the jump from eight to forty-one.
But eight was never, eight was never intended to be the end. And as I said, when I was here talking about it, we saw that as an opportunity to plant a seed for further development in this very underused area, the old railroad property, that would be very beneficial to the town. We, the reason we did eight was that's, because that's all really that could fit on the little space that we have. It wasn't, it wasn't that that was a member that we chose because we wanted it. What we have, what we have now is, what we had then was the opportunity to get state funding for it. And that made it make sense. And what we have to do now is try to make it financially sound. We have a right to do that.
Absolutely, we're arguing that.
Forty, you know, the forty-one units is a member that will work. And we have, in light of the compromise, the substantial compromises we have made to make it comply with what public interest is, which is smaller units that people can afford and that are available in more numbers.
That's fine, and all I've been asking is to show me.
So would it be, would it be helpful to continue this?
Would it make sense to?
And we'll be glad to show you what it is.
So can we table this particular variance request until we receive the economic?
Yes, absolutely.
We'd be glad to come back and get a whiteboard and go over.
Excellent. I mean, I'm, I understand the need for more apartments. It's just I have a responsibility to my constituents out there to do my due diligence and make sure that it's, it benefits the town. You're going to get some benefit out of it. I, but we had one guy come in here one day. He wanted to put twelve units on a place that only allowed four. And he had absolutely no evidence for it. So I'm sure you've got it, but just have a look at it.
Okay, we'd be glad, we'd be glad to come in the next one.
Okay.
And if you wanted to deal with some of the other stuff, variances tonight, that's fine. Or you might wait, go.
So I'm going to read a motion to continue.
Very good.
So variance request number two, move to continue the public hearing to which date and time?
Move on to item.
So we've got to pick a date?
Yeah, that's fine.
So would Monday?
Pardon?
That would be Monday. Do you guys want to?
How much time do you need?
We have it, so whatever.
Where it's to be date-specific, we don't have to re-advertise or anything. I mean, we can do it next week if it's open. I believe we can do it next week if it's open.
I believe, yeah. I don't see why not.
Monday, August fourteenth.
Monday, August fourteenth?
It's Wednesday, the fourteenth. Yep, we'll do the same time, same station.
Shall I continue?
As long as the station's working.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, we can finish reading the motion for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, variance request number two, move to continue the public hearing to August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM in the town council chambers. For a variance request from C.C. Railroad Street, New Market LLC, petitioning the zoning board of adjustment for relief from section thirty-two dash eighty-nine, dimensions table of the municipal code of the town of New Market to permit a total of forty-one residential units with thirty-five residential units in the M2 Alpha zoning district and six residential units in the R2 zoning district on real property with an address of 1, 3, and 5 Railroad Street, tax map U3 lot 138, tax map U3 lot 138 Alpha, and tax map U4 lot 15 within the M2 Alpha and R2 zoning districts.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, we've got a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Let me ask you a question. Is that your best offer?
What?
Forty-one.
Forty-one? Maybe that should go up, huh?
Just to justify the grief for you.
No, is it your best offer?
Forty-one?
Yeah. Is that what you can do?
Yeah.
Let's see, I'm lost now. Okay, I'm a little worried. I got to go back here. All right, item three. Applicant seeks variance or variances eliminating the application of section thirty-two dash forty-six A, sections B and E regarding prohibition?
So it's actually a typo on their part. It's section thirty-two forty-six A, B two E.
B two E?
Yeah.
Okay.
B two, like number two or B through E? B, then number two, then E.
B two E, all right, let's. Oh, B, okay, two E, just, just E.
Yeah.
All right. No, it's just, it's just this one.
Oh, all right. I'm on the wrong page.
Well, though, that's, this is out of the zoning ordinance. This is what, this is what it actually says.
Yeah.
So for those people out there, what the section thirty-two dash forty-six A in the M2 district, item B, permitted uses, subsection two, subsection E, no residential units shall be located in the street level space if the building has frontage on North Main Street, Main Street, South Main Street, and Exeter Road, or Exeter Road. So that's out of the ordinance. So they're seeking relief from that, saying that technically, the frontage on South Main Street is not really viable frontage because it's part of a steep slope for the NHDOT right-of-way. Is that a fair synopsis?
And there's a steel barrier.
Yeah, they've got the guardrails there. Yeah. So with that, we'll open it up to discussion. Let's go through the criteria. Granting is not contrary to the public interest. It would have no impact on the, in my opinion, have no impact on the public interest. Do you agree?
Yes. Yeah.
Criteria number two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. And I think in this case, it definitely would be.
Yeah.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice. In my opinion, it would because the intent of the ordinance is to have commercial space. And to have it in there on a street that you can't access doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If the variance were granted, the value of surrounding properties would not be diminished. No doubt about that. And on the hardship, that, being familiar with the area, the steepness of that slope is hardship enough, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So with that, let's make a motion on that.
I shall do so. All right, variance request. All right, variance request number three, motion to grant. Move to grant a variance request from CC Railroad Street, New Market LLC petitioning the zoning board of adjustment for relief from section thirty-two dash forty-six Alpha, subsection B, subsection two E, M2 Alpha permitted uses of the municipal code of the town of New Market to permit residential units on the first floor of a mixed-use building with frontage on the South Main Street in the M2 Alpha zoning district on real property with an address of one, three, and five railroad street, tax map U3, lot one thirty-eight, tax map U3, lot one thirty-eight Alpha, and tax map U4, lot fifteen, within the M2 Alpha and R2 zoning districts as the petition satisfies the five-part test of the variance statute pursuant to RSA six seventy-four thirty-three.
We have the motion?
Who seconded?
Aye.
Second it.
Oh, second, yeah.
Yeah, all those in favor, James?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, now, the last item, item four. Applicant seeks a variance to allow the parking for the project to contain sixty-two parking spaces, notwithstanding section thirty-two dash forty-six B, two, number two, C, which...
Again, it's a typo on their part. It's section thirty-two dash forty-six A, subsection B, subsection two, C. It's right here. Thirty-two dash forty-six A, B, two, C.
Okay.
Let's see how we can vote on this one, till we decide how many units are there.
That's a good point.
I agree with you, it's table to the...
Does that make sense to you guys?
That's fine.
Okay. Variance request four, motion to continue. Move to continue the public hearing to August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM in town council chambers for a variance request from CC Railroad Street, New Market LLC petitioning the zoning board of adjustment for relief from section thirty-two dash forty-six Alpha, subsection B, subsection two, subsection C. M2 Alpha permitted uses of the municipal code of the town of New Market to permit sixty-two onsite parking spaces instead of the required two onsite parking spaces per residential unit on real property with an address of one, three, and five railroad street. Tax map U3, lot one thirty-eight, tax map U3, lot one thirty-eight Alpha, and tax map U4, lot fifteen, within the M2 Alpha and R2 zoning districts.
Second motion.
You seconded?
I can second it.
All right. Our chairman, our fearless leader.
About that, James?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Aye. I've got a question, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, where we've only had three board members tonight, if we have five next Monday, can they participate in the discussion? I think they can, because we haven't really discussed them, it'd be...
Right, because this has been continued, if we have new members, they can participate.
Correct.
They cannot go back and revisit the other ones, but they can participate in the portions that were continued.
Okay, perfect. Is there anything else that we need to consider? I don't think so.
Gentlemen, we thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your patience, yeah.
Thank you. What's the next item? Is there any new business to come before the board?
No.
Any old business?
No.
Administrator's report?
Um, I got nothing tonight, because it's been a long meeting.
Okay, very good. Uh, so adjournment is in order.
Move to adjourn?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Dave.
Aye.
Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
That was interesting.
We're still on, we're still on.